Others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to act for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken this time to join us this evening. We are very proud of the school system and thank you for your interest at Hartford Public Schools. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la Junta del 21 de febrero de 2021. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La Junta y la Superintendente se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la Superintendente, aprobar presupuestos, contratos y nombramientos de personal y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la Superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la Junta están abiertas al público, son el momento en que la Junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público, por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la Junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y asténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y le damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Given weather conditions, we still have some board members that are on their way. As we look at the agenda, I would like to take the liberty to actually move item number two, actually item number three, public comments up, followed by the Board of Education Annual Organization. So with that being said, we'll now move to public comment.
We as a board in collaboration with the Superintendent and District Leadership are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to think, sorry, coming out to learn more about the Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. Want you to know that we take your concerns seriously and to that end, staff will follow up within 48 hours if follow-up is required via the preferred method of contact the speaker has indicated in the sign-in sheet. We will follow this no-contact method of follow-up for the time being adhering to safety protocols. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la Superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la Junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. El personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las 48 horas si es necesario, a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador haya indicado en la hoja de registro. Seguiremos este método de seguimiento sin contacto por el momento, adhiriéndonos a los protocolos de seguridad. Esa persona investigará su caso y comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Le recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar cuando han pasado dos minutos. El timbre sonará dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios. Gracias. Si alguien necesita traducción, puede ver a la señorita Alba sentada en la parte de atrás. Gracias. Aisha Carruthers.
Hi, my name is Asia Carruthers and I'm currently a sophomore at Trinity College. Last year during the fall and spring semester, me and some of my peers, Olivia Sovey and Amna Zeb, we worked on a research project and we named it the Perry Project. And so we partnered with Desiree Primus, who is an elementary school teacher at Sand Elementary. And basically, the goal of our project was to create a digital archive for Mayor Carrie Saxon Perry. And during all of our research, we had a kind of a hard time finding archival data about her just because there was so little out there. And we conducted a number of interviews and now we have a digital repository about Mayor Carrie Saxon Perry and it's on Trinity College website if anyone wants to check it out. But one component of our project that we were really excited about was creating a mural for Mayor Carrie Saxon Perry. And so that's been in the works for a while. And I'm kind of just here to bring attention to that and to advocate for it. And right now, the Mayor Carrie Saxon Perry mural funds are now included in the Sand School budget. And so I just want to extend a thank you to the Board of Education, the Hartford School District, and the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving for your assistance in obtaining these funds. And also the committee has been working with Dr. Bethany Silver on this project. And that's kind of just why I'm here today is to bring attention to that project, to this mural. We're so excited about it. We've been excited about it for the last year. And you know, things have kind of been moving slow as things tend to do. But yeah, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about that. And we went, we actually went to Desiree Primus's school and we gave a presentation to her students. And they were just so excited to learn about Mayor Perry. They were so receptive to the information and the knowledge that we were sharing with them. And we would like to extend all of that knowledge to the community. Mayor Perry, she was such an amazing person. She was an impactful person to the Hartford community. And even though I'm not from here, I'm from Chicago, I've really just been embraced to this community. I love it. I love being here. And I really want to see this mural come into fruition. I want to see this happen. I want to be able to see community members come out and support this. So just your all's support would be great. Thank you.
Jennifer Thompson. Is this working okay or do I have to hop over? Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Jennifer Thompson. I wanted to speak about two topics. The first is a, oh, thank you. A congratulations for the Trinity Magnet School for winning Magnet School of America again, as well as the Breakthrough Schools getting another Magnet School of America award again. And I'm sure there are so many people that are involved in making these schools a success. One person that I believe is in common with a couple of those schools is the principal of Trinity Magnet School, Julie Goldstein. And I hope that she is recognized and appreciated for the leadership that she has provided to that school, working 24 hours a day through COVID, making sure that families had transparency and communication, doing everything she could to enable and support the teachers and staff, students and the community. And I hope, because I've read other things that appear to be possible leaks from at least the Hartford City or the Hartford School System, I hope that when people provide information to journalists, that they provide the full picture of what a person has provided, working their way through Columbia University to get their masters in social work, going to work in the Bronx, working as a teacher in a trailer in Compton during the Rodney King riots, and then embracing the Connecticut Public Schools and looking for where she could add value, leadership and guidance, not for her peers, not for recognition, not for that award, but for the students and for the community. So again, I wanted to congratulate you all on that because I understand that an award goes to the students, the families that support those students, the administration, the teachers, and yup, the principal as well. So congratulations for that award.
Renee Monteserin. Renee Monteserin. Carol Gale.
Good evening, Board of Ed, Superintendent of Schools. My name is Carol Gale. I am a Hartford resident and currently the President of the Hartford Federation of Teachers. Recently, the Hartford Federation of Teachers, after hearing many concerns from our special ed teachers, held a meeting with many teachers from across the district to address some of their concerns about their workload, especially in this time of a labor shortage and with special ed being a concerned, I mean, an area of that shortage. So the first question that the teachers all looked at was why are sped teachers leaving? And what I am presenting is a collective response from the special ed teachers in our district. So first of all, leaving special ed and leaving Hartford is not an easy decision. Most teachers are dedicated to their students but feel unable to exercise their passion by working hands-on with students. Some of that is due to many additional tasks outside of their job description like covering classes, covering for one-on-one paras, supervising SAT prep classes, teaching a capstone class or participating in advisory-type functions. There's also a concern over professional development not being geared specifically to the special educator, not enough time to service their students, which is their passion, a difficulty in scheduling required meetings. Many of our teachers now have caseloads of about 30 students with 45 PPTs per year that they have to schedule. They feel a lack of respect and a lack of trust. Some administrators don't know or understand what sped entails because students have very delicate needs who have special needs. The special educators feel like they are not always listened to. They feel a lack of clarity between the idea of co-teaching and push-in models. Hartford Public Schools often refers to co-teaching when in actuality only utilizes the push-in model. Pay is certainly lacking in competition and the CTSEDS is an issue that requires a lot more time. There's also competing training for CTSEDS with the letters training and a general feeling of a lack of support that there's not adequate dedicated time set aside with sped directors. Secondly, we did then brainstorm a list of solutions, which I will also share with you. One is compensation for the extra caseloads that people are carrying, having a special ed secretary who can handle clerical tasks and ease the workload, transparency about all available positions during the hiring process, ending the practice of sped directors having to compete for applicants, having sped monitors introduce how to write IEPs in CTSEDS, having a checklist of sped protocols and training, especially with regard to digital platforms during onboarding, having sped coaches, providing sped director office hours at times when sped teachers are available, providing an in-building point person for new hires, reduce or alter the letters commitment such that sped teachers can also attend sped trainings and involve sped teachers in decisions regarding the placement of sped students in mainstream classes. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share that.
Michael Downs.
Good evening, Board. Michael Downs, 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. Presently, I'm the President of the Hartford Federation of Substitute Teachers. I'd like to start off by saying I agree with Carol Gale on the problems with special education teachers. But I'd like to, tonight, I'd like to speak to the Board and possibly several superintendents to a certain extent as well about the upcoming election this fall for city council and mayor. I've had a chance to speak to several of the candidates that indicated they were interested in running for mayor. I said, well, you got three concerns. One is education, one is poverty, and the other is crime. Education, we still have 60, 65% of our high school graduates that do not have gainful employment or have problems getting gainful employment. And we have trouble with unemployment in Hartford in general. We have no vocational technical education, so that contributes to part of it. And then, of course, poverty. There are many, many people in this city that are ill-fed, ill-clothed and ill-housed. Most, the vast majority, are students and children. They go to the city, the schools in the city of Hartford. And the third thing is crime. All the problems with education and poverty combined can lead to crime. And Hartford needs, I heard, I read in the paper, one of the candidates said, well, we need more police. Well, okay, we need more police. But we also need more social services connected to the police force so that the, these people can, these non-law enforcement people can help with certain social problems that crop up in the city and can be very dangerous to policemen who aren't necessarily educated to be able to intervene. And the money's out there. You can get the money, but you have to raise taxes. You have to go after the large businesses, the wealthy businesses in this, in this city and increase their property tax. And also, you have to go after the suburbs. The state representatives and state senators from the suburbs constantly deny money to the city of Hartford as well as other cities because they feel that we get, we get too much, we get enough, we waste money. We're not wasting money. We don't have enough money. And we need to, the money we need, we need to put into the school system, combat poverty and fix the crime problem. Thank you.
John Walton.
Good evening, Superintendent and distinguished board members. I just would like to say this real quick. I enjoy seeing you board members and I hope you had a good holidays because it's our diversity and differences of opinions that offer us the ability to make decisions with the authority you're given in our school district. So I just wanted to say that. I think we should embrace the differences of opinions so we can have the balance needed. Black History Month for me is about reflection and reform. Anyone who's been paying attention knows that the American history and global history, but we're going to stay specific to American history, hasn't always been that bright. But over the years, we've gotten better by reforming systems that were in place, that were put into place to make sure that certain people didn't have opportunities that other people had. So we've been doing our best with these opportunities such as Black History Month to focus on those type of things. So a year ago, I was here talking about the George Floyd situation and how it was relevant to the workplace. And I find myself, again, coming back to Tyree Nichols. And I want to say, you know, our prayers are with Tyree Nichols and his family and friends and all those who affected negatively about that tragedy. But I want to make it relevant to how we work here. And I was specifying in my presentation last year of how those situations highlighted a couple of things, tough things that we don't really have conversations about. One is race because it did play a factor. But there was another thing that played a factor. People in positions of authority and systems where they can leverage their authority to present bad behavior or things that are not right. And we have to start focusing on making sure that we are accountable as city leaders, as a board and as people in this, in this industry of education. We have to make everyone accountable for their actions. See, what happens is these systems that have been put into place for years alleviate accountability for people who were in authority. And these situations with Tyree Nichols and George Floyd showed us that people with authority should be held to a high level of accountability because they should be serving and protecting the citizens like Tyree Nichols and George Floyd, not harming them. So that brings me to our systems. One of our systems, and I'll give you a perfect example. We have multimillion-dollar contracts with vendors, but yet we don't require these vendors to provide job opportunities or internships for our students, which does not give the people who live here or the students here the ability to raise their economic status. I think we need to really revisit and look at that and say, if you're going to take millions of dollars from our taxpayers, then you should be required to provide an opportunity for the people who live here and the students who go to school here. Because those are the stakeholders that we are supposed to be creating systems to protect and serve. And what we're finding is that we have systems that are not serving and protecting our students in our community, but are serving and protecting those in authority and their own ambitions and agendas. That brings us to the violence that happens in Hartford, right? Hartford is rated between eighth and fifteenth as one of the most dangerous cities in America. What does that say? Coining the phrase homicide Hartford. Because our students don't have opportunities that speak to their needs, they're in the streets doing things that present better opportunities for them to make money, selling drugs, crime, robbery, all of things that make Hartford one of the most dangerous cities in America. How do we change that? By providing, by requiring these vendors to give them opportunities to make better choices. That brings me to our youth program. One of the reasons why Local 566 invested in advancing the youth program so that we could have students not on our streets, but involved in the investment of rebuilding their schools and reinvesting in the structure and functions of their school. This was the purpose for us getting involved in that initiative and we want to advance it. And we have a program that's getting ready to potentially start March 2nd, which is the spring program. And we would really like to push for that program to start on March 2nd. We're ready on our end and I know your chiefs are very busy in trying to get that together. We just want to make sure that we have more kids in our schools working than on our streets committing crimes. This brings me to parent advocacy. Parents, watching, every parent, please listen to me. We cannot affect change by working independently. Board members, you guys are leaders of your communities. We have got to galvanize our parents and our parent advocacy groups into one coalition with core agenda values between all of the schools. This way, we can create an agenda that will then be petitioned to be heard by the Board of Education and the Superintendent and the Mayor's Office. We have a mayor's race coming up. If the public didn't know, we want them to know a mayor's race coming up. And the question for our mayor is, and our potential mayor is, what is the, what is he going to keep focused with the parents and the education of our system? This is why we need to create a coalition of parents that, and parent advocacy groups that create an agenda charter that can be presented and heard. And I would just lastly want to speak about the kids last month who advocated for themselves about the food service issue. I was so proud of those kids for advocating themselves because adults can come up here and talk all they want, but it's the kids and the stakeholders that we're invested in. And there should have been years ago that attention paid to the fact that kids are getting the same portion sizes from kindergarten all the way to high school. If we had a direction or directors who could actually focus on those stakeholders, which are the children they serve in Hartford community, instead of focusing on me or any other union president who brings issues or advocates, then we would have addressed this issue a long time ago, Superintendent, and this would have never even come across your attention. But unfortunately, the kids had to speak for themselves and I'm proud that they did. Thank you for your attention to these matters. And together, remember, our differences are what gives us the balance that we need to make the changes that are appropriate for our school system. So I thank you guys.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. As mentioned before, we'll now move to item two, which is the Board of Education Annual Organizational Meeting. The Board of Education conducts its annual organizational meeting every February. This is a process when offices are elected and we use paper ballots for each office. The nominations will be made, the candidate's name will be listed on the ballot, and each member will sign the form. Ms. Santiago will collect the paper ballots and will form us of the results. After that, Ms. Lori Misery, Assistant Corporation Counsel, will proceed with the oath of office. First, starting with Board Chairperson. I will now take nominations for the office of the Board Chairperson.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would like to nominate Philip Rigger. And I just want to say some kind words about Philip Rigger. He serves as Vice President of Enterprise Transformation of Hartford Healthcare and one of Connecticut's most extensive integrated healthcare systems with over 30,000 employees. In his role, he is responsible for development and execution of transformative approaches for various Hartford healthcare segments in generating partnerships that expands Hartford Healthcare's access in addition to geographical markets, including increasing retail footprint. Chairman Phil has done a phenomenal job up until this point and he is a father of some beautiful children and a husband. So I nominate Phil Rigger as Chair.
I accept the nomination. Thank you, Pastor Johnson. Are there any other nominations for the office of Chair of the Board? Having heard none, I now close the nominations for Chair of the Board. Please cast your votes. Thank you. Moving on to Board Vice Chair. I will now take nominations for the office of the Board First Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Pastor AJ Johnson.
I would like to nominate Pastor A.J. Johnson.
Mrs. Johnson, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Any other nominations on the floor for the office of First Vice Chair for the Board? Having heard none, I now close the nominations for First Vice Chair of the Board. Please cast your votes. Congratulations. I will now take nominations for the office of Second Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Yehira Escobano.
Ms. Escobano, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Any other nominations on the floor for the office of Second Vice Chair of the Board?
Yes, I would want to nominate Kim Oliver.
Ms. Oliver, do you accept the nomination?
Thank you for the nomination, but unfortunately, due to traveling schedules, I can't accept. Thank you.
Any other nominations on the floor for the Second Vice Chair of the Board? Having heard none, I now close the nominations for Second Vice Chair of the Board. Please cast your votes. Congratulations. I now take nominations for the Office of Board Secretary.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to nominate Francois Theres Ledger.
Ms. Ledger, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Any additional nominations on the floor for the Office of Board Secretary? Having heard none, I now close the nominations for Secretary of the Board. Please cast your votes. Thank you and congratulations to all my colleagues. Look forward to working with everyone again. We now move to item four, reports. More importantly, the report of the Chair. Before I begin, I do want to say it has been a privilege, serving as Board Chair for the past 12 months. It has not been easy, but I think we have laid some good groundwork in terms of governance and how we conduct business. Again, I think as you heard from some of the public comments, but also just through various community stakeholders, there's a lot more to be done. With that being said, I do want to report out that under the current bylaws and as the Board Chair, I am establishing a Legislative and Advocacy Task Force with the hopes of becoming a standing Hartford Board of Ed Standing Committee that will run through our typical governance process and will seek board approval. One thing that has been very clear to me is that Hartford is a great city. We certainly have our challenges, and the school system is part of the solution. I think for too long, we have somewhat been, I would say, reactive in the legislative arena. I think we could be more proactive and really push the agenda and make sure that our voices are heard with our state legislators. So, I very much look forward to working with members of this Board as well as our communities. And I will look to engage with various stakeholders as we move forward this work. Lastly, I would say, as far as my role as a Chair, I would continue to meet with various stakeholders. I know I've made it a point to attend as many NRZ meetings as possible. I know that has been a bit focused here for this leadership team, and we will continue to do that. My hope is that we'll be able to attend all of them, at least have representation at all of them as best as possible. So, be on the lookout for that. If we're falling short, I encourage you to hold us accountable and make us aware. But again, we very much look forward to stronger engagement and tighter alignment, particularly as we launch this Legislative and Advocacy Task Force. As always, I will remind every Board meeting, you can find the full committee reports on Board Docs. It will have all the attachments and videos. And as a reminder, workshop and meetings are live streamed as well as viewable after the meeting. YouTube links are saved in each meeting agenda in Board Docs, and I encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. If you have any questions, please contact Christina Santiago at Board, our Board Liaison at CSantiagoHartfordSchools.org. We now move to the report of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman, and congratulations to all of our Board Officers as well. I do have a visual of a few data slides to share, but I just want to highlight a few other items. And of course, reminder that the detailed report can be accessed also on Board Docs. Just want to send a special shout out to all of our educators. They should be on break. However, there is a core group that is actually serving in our intercession. And so, I would be remiss if I didn't highlight gratitude for the work that they've done thus far to learn from and one another, and then also to show up this week as part of our intercession and COVID recovery strategy. And also shout out to some of our students. Weaver High School Journalism and Media students have launched a new radio show on WQTQ called The Teen Takeover. And so, as part of their pathway program, the students work with the team at QTTQ. Right, that's our on-campus radio station to produce and broadcast a live one-hour talk show about topics and issues that are of interest to our teens. And so, the new episode of Teen Takeover is going to air the third Sunday of the month. And so, and it will be also streamlined, streamed online. And so, more to come on that. I just wanted to highlight the great work that some of our students are doing. And then, if we can shift to some of the data visuals as we continue to pay close attention and implement our strategies to improve attendance and engagement. So, generally, we are seeing improvement. We continue to see improvement in both average daily attendance rates and chronic absenteeism district-wide. Now that we've made it to the February intercession, I just wanted to note that there has been a significant increase in chronic, decrease in chronic absenteeism compared to what we experienced last year. And then, we did experience an increase during the month of December, this past December as well. But overall, when you look and compare to last year, and you see, for example, the blue and the green bars there, that's average daily attendance. The blue represents this year, and so, we want those blue bars to be higher than the green ones, which represent last year. And as you see across all of the months, they are. So, that's a good sign. The bars on the right are the ones that we want to be lower. And so, the orange bars represent chronic absenteeism, right? Students that are missing 10% or more of their school year, and we want those to be lower. And so, we certainly see that at this time last year, our chronic absenteeism rate was at 46%, we are at 38%. We go to the next slide. We do see, this is representative of all grade levels for average daily attendance by grade. And you see all the blue bars across all of the grades, right, are higher than last year, which is a great sign. And just a few highlights here. In addition to average daily attendance increasing for every grade level, grade five happens to have the highest daily attendance rates. And lastly, if we take a closer look at chronic absenteeism across all grades, we see that chronic absenteeism has decreased across every grade level. And we have grade two students have the lowest chronic absenteeism rate here. We, of course, continue to double down on our data monitoring efforts and, of course, the interventions. And just giving a heads up that in our March Board Workshop, we are going to do a deep dive into our tiered systems of support. And so, we'll be looking closer at these data and the interventions that we're implementing across our schools. We're also going to do a deeper dive on correlating our behavior data with student engagement, suspension, expulsion data. And so, again, looking at attendance and student engagement from a variety of prevention and support lenses. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Before I turn to my colleagues to see if they have any questions as it relates to Superintendent's report, I do have one question. As I look at the data, are you able to talk a little bit about the, from what I remember, the biggest delta was between, the transition between eighth and ninth grade in attendance? I think there was roughly a 10% swing. Any, I think it's the slide before this. Yeah, so when I look at, right, seventh grade is at 90, let's call it 91%, and then eighth grade is at 89, 90, then ninth grade, it's 80, 81. Can you speak to that? Like, what's happening there? And then, more importantly, since we have the budget coming up, are some of the findings reflecting on the budget of how we allocated some of our funds?
We certainly want to make sure that we continue with the resource allocation that we have. And so, there's been no reductions there. What I want to highlight is in terms of up until seventh grade and eighth grade, right, students are, they don't travel as much as they do from teacher to teacher and from class to class as they do in ninth grade. And we know that that transition from eighth to ninth grade is a challenge for some of our students, which is why we want to double down on the supports that we provide during the summertime with our ninth grade academies. We also have to continue to work on identifying the students at the high school level that have kind of moved over on the threshold of tier two to tier three of being chronically absent. And so, that's where the mentoring comes in and all the other extra supports that we have to provide our students. One thing that we have to make sure of, Chairman, is to identify the root causes, right, for the reason that our students are chronically absent, whether it's because there's an academic issue that we have to support our students with, whether there's a social, emotional, mental health and wellness issue. And so, these are the things that our attendance teams, along with the home visitation program that we have, allow us to get very personalized into the support. But it does take the resource, to your question around the budget allocation. And so, to the extent that we can also leverage our community partners, it is, you're going to see one of our agenda items tonight that, you know, aims to get at engaging our students in the middle school and bolstering their, not just the supports that we provide, but how they're responding to that as they transition into the ninth grade. So, it's not one, one direct answer, right? This is a complex, complex issue, and so, we want to make sure that we address it from multiple areas. Resources for students, but capacity building for staff as well, which is what the data tools, the systems and the processes allow us to do.
Thank you. Are there any questions from my colleagues as it relates to the Superintendent's report? Ms. Brody.
Yes, do we have not broken out in the ways that it was, is broken out in this report, but do we have a number pre-pandemic for chronic absenteeism as a district?
We do. We do have all the data that you see here, Ms. Brody, several years back, yes.
I'm sorry, my glasses. Let me look behind me. I really cannot see that.
This is just comparing to last year?
Do we have anything before? Like, did we, were we better off? If we don't have the exact number, were we like better off pre-pandemic?
So, I actually appreciate that question. I think for next Board meeting, what would be helpful is if you take our best year before pandemic as the baseline, and then you have this year-over-year look. So, instead of two columns, I think to Ms. Brody's question, there should be three, with that first one being kind of the baseline of like the best that we've done pre-pandemic. Ms. Brody, does that, does that address your question?
Yes, thank you.
Board Member Johnson.
Yes, just really quickly, thank you for this Superintendent. To our Chairman's point, the same with middle school going into high school. I remember this fact of kindergarten going, one of our lower grades, K going into one, just that small transition at that point was very alarming. Can you speak to that? Can you speak to that mildly increasing this year, but also can you speak to what success has fifth grade seen that is getting them in school and their daily attendance rates up?
Yes, and so if you go to the next slide, I think it's a better visual there, Mr. Johnson, when you see Kinder, right, zero to the left, and then ninth, those are our highest data points. And so those are our highest chronic absenteeism rates. I think that's what you're referring to. And those are the pain points. And we've had, we've had those consistently even pre-pandemic, Kinder and ninth grade, that's the biggest transition point. You know, when we think about kindergarten, we know that that becomes a, it requires a different approach. One is, one that is really focused on a familial approach as well, right? Knowing that some of our families, this is the first time that they're having their children in school, especially as we think back through the pandemic, there were families that decided not to send their children to a pre-K3 or pre-K4 experience. And so we are starting now to see the need for additional awareness for our families as to what it is, what are the experiences that their child misses academically and socially when they're not in school, right? Some of our families might think that it's, you know, it's one day here, one day there, and that it doesn't really equate to much, but it does, right? That's instruction that is actually being missed. And so the team, specifically in communications with the Office of Academics and Engagement, are working on, it's not just an awareness campaign, it's not just a marketing campaign, it's really an awareness campaign. For example, videos highlighting what exactly is happening, what does it look like, what does the instruction look like in a kindergarten classroom so that our families can see. And so that's in the works now. And then it continues to entail an entire community approach where some of our families need additional support. And so the family and community support providers at our schools make those connections with some of our providers. Your question as to fifth grade, you know, I want to think that one of the reasons is that we have made additional investments across our schools. You know, the Scaling Equity Innovation Grants have allowed our schools to do a lot of different activities that, you know, get at student engagement from different angles as well. And so we're gonna continue to, again, try to expand the extracurriculars, which we know we've, they've made an impact for our students in wanting to be connected to their school environment. But I don't want to gloss over the fact that for some students and some families, there are significant challenges that are real and that we, as a school in isolation, as a school system, cannot solve.
Board Member Oliver?
Yes, thank you for the presentation, Superintendent. Really quick technical question. For the average daily attendance, one of the things you mentioned is that in high school, our students begin to move from classroom to classroom. Does that impact like the definition of attendance and what that means in high school? So in other words, you have to be there a certain amount of the day, but you know, if you don't go to seventh period?
You have to be there for half of the classes.
Okay.
And I know that we've had, we just had this conversation recently around students that, for a reason or another, cannot come to their first period class, but do come midway through their second period. And if they stay in classes for the remainder of the day, they are considered present.
Okay, thank you. That was helpful. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the next item. Thank you, Superintendent. Agenda item five, business agenda, 5.1, contract approval of Eli Patrick Company. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Eli Patrick Company for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2024 at a cost not to exceed $215,998. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Superintendent?
Thank you. Just for a little bit of background, Eli Patrick and Company works with opportunity youth and young adults to navigate through pre-existing barriers. Specifically, there are three levels of support with core skills in middle school so that our youth can become self-advocates. And specifically, as it relates to the work that is being proposed for Milner Middle School, the three primary goals are, one, around leadership development, preparing students to become leaders of themselves and within their communities. A second area is financial and credit education, making sure that our students establish a sound foundational management habits and best practices to build assets and familial economic stability and mobility. And third is business entrepreneurship and career education, helping our students with explorations of the broad array of career and life options post-high school. So Dr. Clark and his team are looking to work with middle grades, including instruction on self-awareness, attitudes, behaviors, consequences of choices and decision-making. The program will include, at the end, toward the end of the program, a pitch competition between student-led groups to propose a business idea, and the winning idea will result in a student grant that will be awarded to the winning group and a product launch. Students will submit a project idea to solve a problem in three, one of the three areas: social good in terms of a nonprofit, skill-based or service product, or the sale of a product over good. Just want to reference that the funding for this is from the School Improvement Grant. Milner Middle does receive funding from the state's School Improvement Grant System. And as part of that grant application, the school did have to work with the Connecticut State Department of Education to identify very specific barriers. And as part of their application, which was approved by the state, the focus areas are attendance, student behavior, restorative practices. And this proposal is in alignment with that and was approved by the state.
Thank you. Any questions, comments for the superintendent? Board Member Johnson?
Do you, Mr. Chair? Is it possible to have Dr. Clark come?
Yes.
Good evening. I just wanted to drag you all the way up here just to tell you how proud I am of you. You have come into this community several years back, and I've seen you grow, and I've seen the work that you put into various organizations. And what's put before us today is something that I know that you're truly capable of doing, because you have the heart and passion to do it. And my only question is, who are those folks up there looking down at you? Who are those people?
That's my wife and my children.
You dragged them out all the way to a board meeting for this moment?
Yes.
Well, that's my only comment. I will be voting in the affirmative for this because I know the hard work that you do, and I just want to say that. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Board Member Oliver?
Thank you, Board Chair. I don't know if I can follow that, but I just want to acknowledge, I've had an opportunity to work with Dr. Clark and also Eli Patrick on a couple of different projects, as well as some work he's done in former capacities where he's led youth work across the state, really increasing the training. And from the work and the commitment to several of our schools that he's been in for a few years now, and just really appreciative of the data and the results you've been able to show us, the business acumen and just the know-how when you've come and speak to the board, I just wanted to share that appreciation. And I'm really excited in terms of what this can do for our students, especially as we talk about financial literacy, in particular, and your approach to it. So I am very supportive of this and looking forward to it, and hopefully it's a model that can work and be expanded across multiple schools. So thank you, Dr. Clark. I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Board Member Smurlin?
I don't know, Dr. Oliver, I'm not familiar with your work, but what I see here and what I'm hearing from my colleagues, I want to commend you. We see a number of proposals that have lofty goals but no metrics. You've gotten very specific, quantifiable metrics, and I look forward to seeing those being achieved, and I have great confidence in your ability. So thank you. Great proposal.
Dr. Clark, I do have a question, and wondering if you could come up. As I look at the KPIs for success, as my colleague, Dr. Smurlin, just alluded to, right, very detailed and spelled out. I guess my question in kind of your time here with us, right, and in very small sample size, what's your confident rate of achieving these KPIs within the timeframe that's been allocated within the contract?
So I'm looking at this project over the period of time of 18 months, and given my previous work at Milner and other schools, I'm confident that we can achieve this. In my previous work, we've worked with students in middle school at Milner specifically, and have seen these KPIs achieved, particularly with suspension, reduced attendance has increased as well as grade performance. So we believe that by enhancing this program based upon what you're seeing today, we can achieve those results and possibly greater. But it's not possible to do this without the partnership of the school and the school leadership. So while Leah Watson is not here today, I do want to commend him for his long-term support, but I believe that with his support and his administration that we can make this happen.
Thank you. And I guess the follow-up question to that is, so as you look at these, and let's assume that you're back here in another, actually in 2024, I guess, right? Can you put, like, can you push further? Like, can you do, like, what would be an ideal state where this is rolled out across, like, the district, across the state? Like, what is it that you need? You mentioned kind of the buy-in from the principal, but what else do you need to really, like, move the needle across a large, in a large scale, I guess?
Yeah, so at the very baseline for me, I can't stress enough, school leadership. The principal has to be bought into the idea as well as his team. I have found that not only the school leadership, but the teachers that are allowing us to come to their spaces have to be bought in. On a broader scale, I think that if we're able to pilot this and kind of see what can work on a consistent basis with the students, then I can better answer that question. Because we haven't piloted outside of one particular school at any given time, I can't really answer that or respond to that. But I do believe that as we kind of test these ideas and a little bit more in the next 18 months, I can better answer that next time.
Thank you. Why don't you see this? Board Member Brody?
Thank you. My question is for Dr. Clark. And I do thank you tremendously for, because this would have been probably all my questions. So I appreciate it, as Dr. Smurlin appreciated it. How, you're a staff of how many?
Five.
And maybe not, maybe it's not for you, but if I could get grounded, maybe Ms. Santiago, in probably three, four, and five of the fourth slide of the presentation, so I could know what I'm comparing it to. Like, three is reduced chronic absenteeism, two 23.8%. So I'll just have a base on like what the actual goal is that would be helpful. Do you have a, do you have anything particular, like how you deal with parents, like how to get them?
So this is connected to the previous question about what we need to do to roll this out on a broader scale. That's one of the questions we're seeking to answer this particular school year, this project year. Historically, we haven't seen parent engagement rise, so that's something we're looking to pilot with this program year based upon the projects that we're having the students work on, as well as working with the school staff who already has parent engagement as a part of their workload.
Okay, and this is, I'm assuming, some working like with the staff?
Yes.
Knowing, because that's how you kind of know the student in that classroom element. And last question, can I visit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Eli Patrick and Company for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2024 at the cost not to exceed $215,000, $215,998. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion moves. Item 5.2, contract approval of 241 Care. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with 241 Care for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2023 at the amount not to exceed $69,350. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Superintendent?
Yes, the team at 241 Care is, they're no strangers to Hartford Public Schools. The mission, their mission is to provide children the opportunity to grow physically and emotionally through the play-filled power of sports. The vision is a world at play with individuals who are physically and emotionally well. And they do this through sustainable physical literacy development programs for children, families, and communities, focused on building culture, ability, relationship, and enjoyment, and of course blending that with sport and physical activity sampling, nutrition awareness, and practical skills of social-emotional learning. This is tightly connected to our focus on the whole student and ensuring that we create school cultures and climates and where students feel seen, valued, heard, and supported. Also supports with our efforts to engage our students. And there's a variety of proposals in one here, right, where Noah Webster, Breakthrough and Breakthrough South. The funding source for this is through the Inter-District Magnet Grant for Social Support in Extracurricular Programming. We have several team members here. We have Principal Guffsonson, as well as Sherri Davis-Gooch and the team from 241 Care.
Are there any questions for the superintendent? Or for 241 Care, actually?
I'm gonna ask Chief Davis-Gooch to speak to that. And just to make a connection, Chief Davis-Gooch, with regard to the Inter-District Magnet School Academic and Support Program, and the focus to increase the integrated educational opportunities and retain students in our magnets.
Good evening, all. Sherri Davis-Gooch, Chief Operating Officer, and I'm sorry, Board Member Walker, I did not hear your question.
Yeah, apologies. My microphone wasn't on. I was asking, how many students are proposed to be served by field trips and coaching and other? and other pre- and post-school activities?
Oh, sure. I'm going to start with the principal and let her explain how many students she planned to enroll in the program. And then I'll be back to piggyback on the superintendent's question.
Hi, I'm Principal Gustafson from Breakthrough South. And I'm also speaking for Gus, who couldn't be here. Principal Jacobson from Noah Webster. So, at Breakthrough South, we're looking at, we're already partnering with 241 Care. So, they're already working with our students before and after school. But this particular additional contract, we're looking at about 100 students across several grade levels. And then the same for Noah Webster, about 100 students as well.
Thank you. While you're there, let's have a follow-up question. Measurable goals? I think the program sounds terrific. Is there an outcome for these students that is anticipated or that is measured or that we've seen to benefit in the school community?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, we're looking at several things. We're looking at reducing chronic absenteeism, of course. That's one of the district goals. We're looking at specifically the climate survey, so the parent and family climate survey. Looking at specifically, do students feel connected to school? Are families happy or know that their children are involved in before and after-school activities? So, those are kind of the measurable goals we're looking at. Is looking at increasing the answers on the climate survey and then decreasing chronic absenteeism.
Thank you.
So, I do have a question related to my colleague in terms of goals. So, I actually do see the goals here listed. And I guess this is more for superintendent, your team. Why I think these are great goals, I would love to see goals that are probably a little bit more in line with what we just heard from Eli Patrick and Co. In terms of being very specific around attendance, academic improvement, and so forth. Again, I think these are a good starting place. But I would tell you that if we do show success and we want to make this and scale this, I would very much anticipate some more concrete goals that aligns very much with our district model of excellence.
That makes sense. Thanks.
Are there any additional questions from my colleagues? Board Member Johnson?
Greetings. I'll make this very quick. What I'm looking at is kind of the proposed scope and services. So, as they're plowing through the packet, I just want to go ahead and ask you, what are some of the activities that you're going to be doing with our young people? I'm sure it's in the packet, so just oblige me for a moment and ask them, what are the... Thank you, Francois. I see it right there. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So, at Breakthrough South, they're a little bit different at both schools. So, Breakthrough South is going to be Super Saturdays. So, inviting students actually back to school on Saturday to do some sport sampling. And then also taking our middle schoolers on a field trip to see the Connecticut Sun. And then for Noah Webster, they're looking at something we're already doing at Breakthrough currently, which is before and after-school programming, including fencing. So, we're currently doing that at Breakthrough, but they're adding that at Noah Webster. Am I missing anything?
I was hoping you were going to call me up the way you did the gentleman before. It was, that was pretty special. I'm Steve Boyle, and my wife and I are COO and CEO of 241 Care. So, the comprehensive model of this is really, you know, Holly alluded to it in terms of creating connectedness at school. But it's also a leadership development model around it. So, part of what we do is we train the older students in the program to actually become the coaches mentors of the younger kids. And so, it creates this really cool connection with older students who are now kind of being trained to be what we call physical literacy pals. It's kind of like reading buddies, but they'll work under the teacher-coaches in there. And they, because we find that kids need help in self-organizing. They don't know how to use equipment and space, and they don't really know how to organize games. And so, that's part of what we do. And we'll use, well, we try to introduce non-traditional sports. So, we also have Free Play Fridays in the program. And what was really cool one day when we went over to Breakthrough South was Free Play Friday. Normally, we would think that kids would choose certain sports we know. Well, they chose to play floor hockey that day. And it was because that was a sport they had gotten introduced to. Badminton was particularly popular at one of the schools. So, really what we're trying to do is just use sport as the vehicle to teach social-emotional learning skills, teach leadership skills, but do it in an integrated approach where it's sticky. And so, we appreciate the opportunity to continue to build out this model in the system with you all.
And thank you, and I look forward to building a relationship with you as well.
Thank you.
Board Member Bella?
I saw Kim's first, so, okay. Well, thank you so much through you, Board Chair. My question's really around just the timing. It looks like it's a before-school program. So, I'm wondering how that jives with transportation? You know, are kids identified and that worked out, or how's that going to work?
Yeah, so at every school we're at, it's a little bit different. In fact, we were hoping to try to get into as many neighborhood schools as possible for the problem that you're addressing, which is when we do it as a before-school model, it is dependent on who can get there by a certain time. And so, that is, you know, we all know the cost of transportation, and there are limits around that. But we are able to draw from students who are also part of, at least I know at Breakthrough South, it's called Ahmed, that's their before-school program. So, children in that particular program have the opportunity to join us. So...
We also do after-school programming, which is, you know, highly successful because the students are already there, right? And then they can stay on, and, you know, we find that that's also been working as well.
Yeah, the issue is always going to be, can they get there on time before? Or can they get picked up afterwards? But we have had more success with kids staying after and then being able to get picked up late. If we had late buses, that would be fantastic for, at some of these programs.
Board Member Oliver?
Thank you. I wanted to acknowledge that I saw the use of saying increasing positive behaviors and also around self-regulation. So, would you be open to capturing some of that data? I know we talked about some other types of data that you're already planning on and perhaps some cross-referencing with things such as the chronic absenteeism and some of our other key data points. But I'm seeing you're nodding your head, so it sounds like the answer is yes, that you'll be able to track that and we'll be able to have those proof points of like before and after working with the children?
Yeah, so we do have a partnership right now with the University of Connecticut who's helping us with some evaluation measures. Because we realize in order for us to create long-term partnerships with folks like the Hartford Public Schools, we're going to need more data. And so, that'll be particularly helpful for us. So, we can come in and sort of show the benefit of the work that we're doing.
That's great. Just a quick follow-up comment. So, as a former director of Families, Children, Youth, and Recreation for the City of Hartford, this is critically important because this work is important, but sometimes we don't have the data. And I'm so excited to hear that you're partnering with UConn, because I had the opportunity to partner with UConn previously in a recreation program. And it just was so insightful, the level of data we were able to get with the students we were working with. So, looking very much forward to it, and that's going to be really powerful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Ledger?
Thank you so much. I wanted to say that it was great to hear about your program at our committee, the Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, where you were very detailed and explicit. Thank you so much for that. With, I have two questions. The first question is, would you be providing any instruction? Or would your program be running on half-days or early dismissal, early release days?
At this point, we proposed at Noah Webster, I believe it's five days a week before school, and then two days a week, the standalone fencing program after school. We can be super flexible with it, but it's just, it's really a function of just scheduling for parents' pickup and what happens at the schools. Because the other program at South on this particular grant is Saturdays for two hours, two six-week cycles of that, so 12 weeks, and then the field trip.
Thank you so much. And the second question I have is with regards to the fencing, which is very exciting. How have you been able to use fencing? Or how have the students been able to use fencing and other programs later on in life? Have there been scholarships, opportunities like that?
You're capturing our vision, but at this point, this is our first year, actually. Last summer was when we developed the program with Coach Eric Monberg, who usually was formerly at Northwestern University. Now, he's the head coach at Lawrence University in Appleton, Wisconsin. And we're looking to pilot it at different communities throughout the country. But this is the first time we've ever done it as a standalone program. We've always offered it just as a sport sampling offering. And we are seeing the potential for it to be an intramural in low-income areas where access to a sport like this would never be attainable. So, that once kids get the skills of the sport using our model, that they could then go to a fencing club or a school that offers it, college or university, and transition quickly into that sport at that level.
Thank you so much.
Any additional questions? Board Member Brody?
Thank you. Your last comment sort of goes into my question. I don't know if you're going to be able to answer it or Principal will be able to answer. And it'll be the same question for the next contract, so heads up on that. For our Magnet schools, half of our school, for the most part, is Hartford children. So, as far as like enrolling in this opportunity, what is being done so that there's equity along those lines? I know Breakthrough South, my oldest went there, so I understand how they do things. And I was actually there, they invited me as a guest last Friday. And I know that will be the effort. But to make sure that Hartford children, to your point, fencing is not something that we see wide across our community. So, I'm interested to know as far as the enrollment in the program. I know maybe you can speak to like what it's been so far. But I'm really, really interested. And I love our suburban students, don't get me wrong, but Hartford students, reason why Magnet schools exist, right? Because they did not have adequate opportunities. So, could anyone speak to that part of the opportunity for the Hartford student? And just trying to encourage them to be a part? I mean, I know that we do, and I think Holly can speak to this directly, but we do advertise it's open to everyone, you know? So, anybody can join, and, you know, no one's turned away. Again, it's our first year, we've just started, so we haven't maxed out, right? We're still, you know, every session is, you know, we've gotten more and more kids interested, but we haven't had, you know, fortunately, anyone to turn away. So, I don't know, you know, as far as...
I can't tell you numbers, but I just know that, as you know, at Breakthrough South, we use, you know, we use our community meeting format. We use our parent square, we're messaging, we're talking to kids in the cafeteria. We're looking at, you know, inviting students. And definitely, right, like, transportation is a barrier sometimes because half of our students are, you know, outside of Hartford, half are in Hartford. But even the ones that are in Hartford aren't necessarily in our neighborhood because we're not a community school. So, you know, looking at, like, for example, our before-school program that's happening right now, we're doing it at 8:00, 8:00 to 8:30. So, for a lot of parents, even Hartford parents, that is doable. So, even if they can't get on the bus, a lot of our families, we're noticing, like, it's important enough for them. They're coming, they're driving their kids there. Or the buses are coming early enough that as soon as the bus gets there, we let them off the bus. They get in and they get started. So, you know, something to look long-term, I think, is how could we, right? Because that's always been a challenge, is the transportation piece, especially at a, we're an elementary, right? Elementary, middle school, so we're not a high school, so we're not doing, we're not offering late busing. So, in what ways can we look at like next year and moving forward, supporting families for that before-school or that after-school so that more Hartford students can get involved?
Thank you. I'm just hoping that we always look through that lens of equity and knowing...
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
I think it's important to add that that is one key component that the state is requesting through this grant, that these monies are used to attract and retain our students. I'm actually going to have a follow-up conversation with the principal and the team because there is some money set aside for transportation. I think we just have to go back and talk about it. Okay?
You're welcome.
Board Member Ledger?
It's not so much a question, just a comment. Being a Hartford resident and having had my son attend Noah Webster, he's no longer there because of where I work, I teach. And he goes to school in the district where I teach because I need to be able to reach out and touch him if I need to. I will say that I am more than happy to spread the word to the Noah Webster families who have children who are still there, who are in Hartford, who would be so excited if they're not already partaking in this program. But I'm very excited about it.
Okay, the motion on the floor is that Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with 241 Care for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2023 at the amount not to exceed $69,350. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion moves. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item 5.3, Contract Amendment Approval, Stay Plugged In. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Stay Plugged In for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2023 at the cost not to exceed $178,552. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Superintendent?
Yes, this is a contract also funded by the Special Funds Magnet School Extracurricular Program Grant for three schools, Vatonsa STEM, Classical, and Sports and Medical Sciences Academy. Stay Plugged In has been before us. And the focus at each specific school is a little bit, it varies. So, I'm going to start with BSTEM. Through their Architecture, Management, Design, and Consulting, they will support the school in creating a learning competition space that reflects their STEM theme. And also to design courses that are aligned to 21st century skills. The esports room will allow the school team to prioritize three key components there. Design and delivery of the STEM and college readiness curriculum. Provide opportunity for connection to college scholarships and fields that have not been available to our students before. And engage a group of students that perhaps we might have missed given that they're not interested in what's currently being offered, the extracurriculars being offered at the school. With regard to classical Magnet, the amount is specifically for technology. They're not seeking for consultative and installation because the school already has the capacity to do that. And so, the pricing through Stay Plugged In, as you see in your packet, right, includes computers, monitors, keyboards, headsets, cables, wireless... computers, monitors, keyboards, headsets, cables, wireless, and the gaming chairs. And then at S M S A is a replica, if you will, of the work completed at University High School. And it takes into account no existing technology or space for esports. And you have a list in your packet there, right? The signage, the drawings, foundation, gaming PCs, production technology, the desks, chairs, furniture. And we want to make sure that we continue to focus on increasing student engagement, increasing our retention, and improving our recruitment of students into these schools. And the backdrop of it all is making sure that students are exposed to new college scholarship opportunities.
Thank you. Just for my own clarification, was this discussed at our last board meeting? So I guess for the public assumption, can you please articulate kind of what was the takeaway from that meeting?
Stay Plugged In and the support provided to University High for their esports competition as well as exposure to college and career readiness through not only the scholarships, but the opportunities for the gaming and for the players to understand not just college opportunities, but the esports competitions. And that team, I believe, was, they won the state championship.
Thank you. Look towards, I see a couple. Ms. Brody, do you have a question?
Only the Hartford student participation for, I'm assuming, are these new? All of these are new. So I know some of the things, and I guess we can follow up, because it was some questions that were, that was posed to University High, that information was not available, so I guess we can follow up offline. But to this contract in particular, the same thing as the last, really hoping that the Hartford students are encouraged to be a part and to take advantage of what we're offering here.
Do we have representatives to address Ms. Brody's comments?
Good evening. I'm Anthony Brooks, I'm principal of Batonsa STEM Magnet School. Board member, to your point about students using the space equitably, specifically at Batonsa STEM Magnet School, we're going to use the space not only for after-school programming and potentially before-school programming, but part of our STEM Plus courses, where our students can sign up to be part of the esports as a class, in addition to the potential to use it as a club during the school day, so that many, if not all, of our students will have an opportunity to use the space.
Good evening, board members. My name is Allison Giuliano, and I am the proud principal of Sport and Medical Sciences Academy. Just echoing the sentiments of my colleague, Mr. Brooks, the esports program is going to be open to all of our students. It is an exciting time with esports, especially with the opportunities that it affords our students for college scholarships, as well as relevant learning. Our students will engage in learning that means something to them and has a connection to what they're interested in. So we are very excited about this opportunity and look for your support.
Board Member Bello.
Hi, good evening. Just a question, and I'm not sure if it has really an answer, but some of the games that are, can be competitive and are played worldwide, can you hear me okay? Tend to be violent, and I wonder, you know, how the team has thought about that? Is, are there sort of safeguards or more sensitivity classes? I don't know, but something to talk about, the reality of that and the impact of that on youth?
Yes. Hi, Renee Montessorin. Certainly can appreciate the concern with regards to those types of games that are introduced right now. The games that are mostly competed, that are, the kids are mostly competing with at the high school level and collegiately, while there are first-person shooter games at the collegiate level, many of those games are not being played at the high school level. The reality is many of these kids are playing these games outside of the high school. So what high schools have the opportunity, especially schools that have esports teams, they can choose the games that they feel are appropriate for their students and have structures around the games that they're playing to kind of address that. Most of the games that the students are playing are not first-person shooter violence in nature. Rocket League, for example, is soccer played with race cars, and that is probably one of the most popular games that students are being recruited for. In addition, there are sports games as well that are super popular. And as part of the opportunity to engage all students, what we always recommend for the schools is, you know, you have a team that's already in the making, whether you have an esports team or club in place, but soliciting that community and asking them the games that they're playing, the games that they're interested in, will give you a very good sense for the games that they're playing, the games that they want to play in. And certainly the esports coaches, directors, and admin have an opportunity at each coaching session, practice session, to make sure that they're educating the students and making sure that they're very grounded in whatever games that they're playing.
Board Member Walker.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is back to social, emotional, mental health issues around excessive video game playing, and particularly right when it centers on esports, the journey they are taking towards college scholarships and the high competition and the pressure. There's data already written about that, there are side effects to that, and there's a point in life where we can all decide what risks we want to take, but we're bringing it into the educational setting and saying that this becomes a net plus for children's educational journey. So I'm putting back to you as the educators here, what research or study are you doing about that to get yourself educated about that? And then what controls are you going to put in place to make sure we're monitoring the youth engagement with esports to make sure that they get the benefit and not, in some ways, the downsides?
I'm happy to take that in part, and Sean, you can jump right into, but I think the advantage of having a high school program is that you are allowed to put guardrails around how much these students are playing. And, you know, this program is an after-school program, but these kids are not playing for eight hours a day. And the opportunity to compete with students, their friends, as part of a community, allows for that to be a little bit more structured and limiting the amount of time that probably these students will spend playing outside of, outside of the school environment, though.
Follow-up, I'm, how are we educating parents and community on that? I totally, I hear what you're saying. My sense is this, if I play on a team, then I'm telling my mom or dad that, you know what? I'm playing two-plus hours every day because I want to be good. And then I'm playing additional hours every week and in the off-seasons because I want to get a college scholarship. Those hours add up. And so what I'm saying is how is the community, are we really doing exactly what you're saying, which is limiting? Now, what I'm getting at, like in the NCAA, they may have a situation that says, you know what? Kids can't start practice before a certain day in the season, they can't play beyond a certain day, and they can't play a certain sport, like team sports, you can't play at home in the same context. The single-player sports, I can play myself all the time, and I don't know how we monitor or control that, and I don't know how we tell parents, and for real, that if you're being real about that, to really tell parents, they've got to actively monitor. I'm not hearing you say that.
Oh, I can speak to it. As a parent of three children who are very active students, they were athletes, they were also gamers, and it's like anything else in life, you have to have balance. And again, I go back to being part of a team where I was a traditional sport athlete. I played basketball, baseball in high school, I played basketball in college. I know very well how much time is required to reach elite levels of being able to be recruited, but I also know that growing up in my household, there were strict rules around school becomes the first priority, grades are the first priority, managing my time effectively so that I can enjoy those sports is what traditional sport athletes are always applauded for. It's no different with esports. These students will have to maintain a certain level of minimum requirements for grades, they're going to have to be accountable to their teammates for how they interact with each other, how they support each other in that community, how they engage with their community. And as parents, certainly, I think every parent would want to make sure that they're safeguarding against students playing games late at night, just as I would a parent. But again, the fact that you give these students an opportunity to play during the day limits probably how much they're going to play at the end of the day. And I would say that, you know, the students that are very good at that, like they, like any student who's very good at a traditional sport, they're always going to want to spend additional time working on that craft, but if school's not the priority, these students aren't allowed to play, right? So I think a lot of it comes down to being part of a team and understanding the responsibilities that that comes with.
Ms. Ledger, I believe you had a question?
Well, first, I just wanted to say that I'm excited about this opportunity for our young people, because during the pandemic, my son in particular used the video games and, you know, the online gaming to communicate with his friends that he, you know, wasn't able to actually see and, you know, talk to. Screen time. What are you doing, and I know this comes up, what are you doing to just kind of monitor the screen time and the long-term effects that that's been, you know, discussed with regards to the effects on the brain?
So since the last time I was here, I have done some reading in terms of that, and looking at some John Hopkins stuff. The esports is not adding to the screen time, which is causing the issues, it's another outlet for it, right? And it's, and again, we keep talking about the structured out, part of this. So three of my students that are on our team for the fall season were chronically absent. And by chronically absent, I'm talking about in excess of 50 absences, for a variety of reasons. They have not been chronically absent since they started playing esports, right? And what does that do? Right? Esports is connecting our kids to our schools, which we all know, when they're connected to school, they want to come to school. And when they're coming to school, they're doing their learning, and they're building relationships with adults. So those two, my two coaches who coached my esport team are another two positive role models in that child's life. And they are talking to them about coming to school, getting your education, doing what you have to do, right? This is another opportunity and avenue for that. So you're right, right, that we all are on our phones too much, we're all on our screens too much, and they talk about sleep. And the research stuff that I read, and I'm, but no, no, no sense an expert in it, is the excess amount of it that's unstructured, that, that the homes are not restricting. And as an educator, outside of esports, that's one of the, one of the battles that I have with kids is, what are you doing when you get home? Oh, I'm playing, no, no, do your homework. Trying to create a structure for them. So this, this is, the, the screen time is an issue outside of esports. Esports adds structure to it, adds opportunity for interactions with positive role models and giving them guidance on helping to make the right choices, which is something we do all day in all aspects of our job.
Board Member Johnson.
Don't mean to prolong the conversation, I just want to be absolutely clear. I understand, you know, the global landscape of the world changing and how young people are communicating. So as, you know, a young person who enjoyed playing video games and got pulled off of it because it was too much, this is a great moment in history for me. But, but I just want to make sure that before we take this vote, that this is something that the principals find value in, there's community, and it's, it's, it's what you need to make sure your students get, one, get to school, but get the academics that they need. Like, is this a value add? I, I understand that you're here, but I want to be sure and put it on the record that this is something that you all are going to bat for in your buildings.
I firmly believe that this is a way to connect to kids. As I got up here last time, in excess of 80% of kids who play esports have never done an extracurricular activity before. So we are reaching out to kids that we didn't reach before. Just today, and I told him I might talk about him today, I won't say his name, was a young man in my office complaining how he couldn't, he couldn't be on the team. For 10 minutes, we talked about his grades and what he's doing and not doing, and he's got three Fs, right? And what are you doing? He's, because he's, I'm good, I'm good, I can do this. I said, okay, but you got to do the school part, too. Well, I'm doing, I'm doing everything, I got work to make up in these two classes, but this one class I'm trying on, and I'm still not doing good. And I was like, then you got to come in the morning, you got to go see your teacher, you got to go see Ms. Gray, because she will be there to help you. So this, just one kid, this was powerful for him. Like, he's, this is, this is a young man, and I know from the hallways, lots of conversations, he's in my office arguing with me about how he can play on an esports team. So yes, I do think it can help.
If I could add to Principal Tomlin's point, I'm principal of Batonsa STEM Magnet School. As I mentioned, we're home of the nerdy birds. We're not afraid to be smart, we're a place for nerds, and we, we own that, right? We just concluded our basketball season for boys and girls, which was phenomenal, engaging, got parents into the building, it was fantastic. I see this opportunity as a way to engage those students who aren't into the traditional sports programs, right? Especially for my nerdy birds. So it is something that I'm dedicated to, and I'm sure my colleagues are as well.
Board Member Walker.
No, no, please.
No, I was just going to echo Sport and Medical Sciences Academy, the name, you know, everyone, we're bouncing basketballs or we're, you know, playing volleyball, but this truly speaks to the students who don't engage in the sport arena, and they want this opportunity to participate on a team in a sport that they are interested in. That's why I just wanted to answer that to your question.
Thank you, I appreciate the comments.
Board Member Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a comment to you as principal, educational leaders, and to us as a school board. I totally believe in sports and its transformation and everything you're saying, I totally believe. I know today, we will not let any of our young people play football without helmets, and we will not let young people engage in soccer and other activities without the right guards protect themselves. And so, but football started without super duper helmets. What I'm saying is, right now, we're getting information coming across, you know, to us that there's some potential hazards to this, that I just want to be aware of, because it's going to have to be the adults who take that into consideration. I'm saying to us as district leadership, I think we need to inform parents so they can be actively involved with this. I just know that five years from now, we'll be coming back and talking about this, because five years from now, we'll have a much higher stack of data to talk about the pros and cons. And so I'm not necessarily saying we should be against it, I'm just really saying, we really need to be aware of the downsides of it, so we can really get the benefit you're saying without the potential risk. And the one thing, the one principle said I totally agree with, is that in a structured environment, interactive environment, it can be very productive. And to help maybe inform parents that outside of that structured activity, maybe that hours in the bedroom should be limited. And I think parents maybe need to be armed with data and information so they can go tell their young person, just like you said, get good grades to be on the team. Maybe parents can say, let's cut out all the single player for hours at home to be on the team at school. Let's work together to have this be a positive thing all the way around. That's my kind of final comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are there, Board Member Oliver? Are there, Board Member Oliver?
Uh, thank you. Just really quick, I asked this question, I believe, in Finance Committee and did answer it, but I think I want to ask it a slightly different way. So when I look at the numbers for this proposed contract, it's, we talk a lot about our technology, a lot of fixed costs, technology, chairs, et cetera. So as we think about wanting to sustain this, right, assuming this is approved, sustaining over time, the price tag we're seeing today, it appears that it likely will go down. Now, now, so that's my assumption, you know, I want you to confirm it. But the other part of of it is, to be fair, and 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 I'm also appreciative to stay plugged in, it appears that there is somewhat of a discount built in here because charging for technology, maybe some installation, and not the consulting all the way around. Because at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting, I think we talked about the consulting will be there to support the educators and the leadership to be able to fully implement this. So again, just if you could confirm that over time, we're not going to see, like, this is obviously almost $179,000. It will be a significant decrease year over year. But then also, that consulting piece, will you stay involved?
Yeah, so certainly, I can appreciate that. I think, as you can imagine, right, you're laying a foundation, in in many cases, in an empty space, right? So the heavy lifting is the initial build of this. So for sure, moving forward, once you have that established infrastructure and the technology, you know, any upgrades in the future would be, would be minimal or nominal relative to what is being invested today. With the exception of, you know, groups that wanted to, you know, replace gaming PCs, you know, a handful of years down the road. The technology changes, things of that nature. You want to be able to teach other classes that, who knows, the technology that might become available. But yes, to answer your question, the heavy lift, the heavy cost would be upfront costs. And as for the consulting part, we are absolutely here to help esports thrive in these communities because we see the upside potential for these students. The colleges, the scholarship opportunities, the workplace opportunities, it exists for these students. And the path that high school esports can create is is fantastic right now. The opportunities are are wide open for them.
Any additional comments or questions?
I do have one.
Board Member Brody?
Quick questions. Are there any young ladies that participate?
Are there any young ladies? There are definitely female students that are gaming. Is it as higher percentage as male students? Definitely not. There is a concerted effort, though, to provide more opportunities for girls in technology. And this is a great way to engage female students into the, into the world of technology through esports. We've done this as an organization. We've worked with nonprofit organizations where we've introduced Rocket League as part of a introduction to coding class for girls in particular at the middle school level. And that's been a spark plug to see an increase of students that immediately find that there is an interest. So we would expect to see a large influx of of female and male students moving forward, for sure.
Last but a serious question, because my family was having a cookout and I walked through the living room because everyone's outside and I hear somebody talking. It's my little cousin. He's over there and he's obviously gaming. So will they be, so the students probably will be playing students from everywhere, all over the world. So of course, we see these TV shows like Law and Order and it's like, oh, and it makes us scared because they're exposed to everybody. Are, what are we doing to try to protect our students? Or are we just building up like a responsibility within them to say, because they're a little bit older, to when there's inappropriateness or that sort of thing, like the safeguards, as much as we possibly can? Because I'm thinking this is just like out there. But any words around that?
Yeah, I mean, this is, competing in the high school space is a lot different than playing in a basement late at night with, you know, someone that you don't know, right? The schools historically during the pandemic have had to compete against each other virtually. But many schools are now moving to to have that opportunity to to play and compete against each other in person. And that's what the value is of having this esports space. That will allow rival schools to come into each other's space and have these types of events. So with regards to safeguarding who who your students are playing, and that's going to be managed through the school and through firewalls. These students are not going to be able to play against anybody and anybody while they're, while they're playing at school. Now, certainly, the school, the admin, the esports coaches can educate the students and advise them and guide them as to, you know, being careful who they're playing with and making sure that they're, you know, acting appropriately and that their, you know, that toxicity in esports which exists will not be tolerated, right? We've seen, and I've talked to esports directors, high school and college, that have thrown kids off teams because of continued toxicity, similar to traditional sports. If you have an athlete who's not carrying himself the right way or herself the right way, you know, obviously guiding that student is important, but, you know, there, there should be consequences to to rules that aren't being abided by. And certainly, that's something that I think the esports coaches in schools will have the ability to manage.
Thank you. The one thing I would add is, as you can see, there's just a lot of questions. It might be helpful, and you probably have this already, FAQ for public consumption, based on some of these questions that I would pose here today. To my colleagues, I hope we take the same rigor that we did today that we do with other sports, conventional sports or non-conventional sports. So I do appreciate the dialogue. With that being said, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Stay Plugged In for the term outlined in the contract ended June 30 for 2023 at the cost not to exceed $178,552. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion moves. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you. Item 5.4, Acceptance of Funds and Contract Approval, Family Resource Centers. Motion that Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to accept funds for the Connecticut Department of Education Family Resource Center grant in the amount of $508,625. Furthermore, the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the contract below for the term outlined in the contracts ending June 30 for 2023 at the amount not to exceed $508,625. Hispanic Health Council at Maria Sanchez School, the Village for Families and Children at Burns, Rawson, Sand and Whiskel. Do I have a motion? Second, Superintendent?
For a little background, for approximately 20 years, the Connecticut State Department of Education has granted funds for family resource care programs here in Hartford Public Schools. The programs are designed to support and promote comprehensive, integrated, community-based systems of family support and child development services. Currently, we operate in partnership with Family Resource Centers that are, community-based organizations are at the center of that work. We have five FRCs and they offer parent education and training, family support, preschool and school-age childcare services, youth, positive youth development services and family daycare provider training. We are very excited that we have another opportunity to strengthen our family and community partnerships, which, right, we know that it's essential to the student and school improvement outcomes. The work that is being done through our FRCs is timely as it strongly connects with the engagement and supports, and supports the models, right, that we're trying to build throughout the implementation of our strategic operating plan. You referenced Chairman, the community organization, Hispanic Health Council, the Village for Families and Children. And just as a point of additional reference, for the fiscal year 2023, the state allocation for FRCs was $5.8 million. And today, we're seeking the authorization of accepting the funds for $508,625 for our FRCs.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Board Member Brody?
Um, in committee, I asked, because I saw the, I saw one of the proposals. It was saying what would be, like, what the goals were. And because this is not new, as a superintendent said, we've been receiving these funds for many, many years. Do we ever get the data back that same way? Like, one of the things was said was like, we would complete five home visits. I I just, I just particularly remember one of those. So do we ever get data back to say we actually completed this amount of home visits? Like, so we could go back to what the goals were?
Good evening. Alden Allen, Village for Family and Children. Thank for your question. As it relates to the document that was submitted, that document was submitted in May of 2022. At that point in time, as you're writing proposals, we don't get to speak about what we've done. They're asking us to propose what we will do. To date, what has happened, which is, you know, quite interesting because it's the course of the work we have, the organizations that are associated with, has covered the eight months of programming and everything. We, in terms of leveraging our own personal resources, because the state itself wasn't able to do their piece, which then delayed this board piece, which puts us in a very interesting predicament. And as you look at FRCs, that's one of the pieces that they look at. It's a FRC, you're looking at $95,000 to hire two staff to deliver seven program components, three for the entire school year and including the summer program. So the entire program is built on agencies working in good faith, leveraging dollars and doing a variety of things to make sure that services to our families go uninterrupted, irregardless. So right now, I'll speak for the Village of Families, I'm not just speaking in general. We're covering about 65% of the cost of program delivery and floating it out of our own personal budgets, which is a very peculiar place to find yourself in these rather challenging times, is the frame I'll use. But then to go back to your question, just to answer that, I just want to give that as a backdrop. In terms of what actually happens at the FRC, we have monthly meetings on a state level. So all the FRCs within Connecticut meet at a state level in their monthly meetings. Till that ends, at that point, there's reporting, as you referred to the five home visits. That's a specific program model for parents as teachers, which is the birth to five curriculum, which is one of the seven components that we implement. And yes, there are absolute benchmarks. There's an, there's a yearly report that we have to submit. Not only that, there's recertifications that have to take place. So if, in terms of any bits of these data, and thank you very much, we enjoyed being a part of the subcommittee meeting. And we are, we will continue to come back as long as there's a question. But in terms of the ultimate question that you just asked, absolutely, there is data. This is a state-funded program and is rigorously managed. And they're looking at the layers of management. There's the state mandated management. Then through your, through your Office of Engagement, there's another tier of management that allows us to not only take the state information and synthesize it, but then also take some of the real information that's happening on a ground level and turn it into results.
Board Member Brody, do you have a follow-up?
Yes. So the dat, the, the goals that were presented to Hartford Public Schools, are you saying is not, is not specific to just that funding or, I, I, scratch that? So in, in that particular proposal that we're referencing, and I, I do parent as teachers in my real life, too. You speak in my language. I just get so excited with those zero to five. I'm sorry.
You understand the rigor?
I digress. So just a way that we can imagine what our families are experiencing. Like, we could say, well, we know that through this school, that these are the numbers, even though I'm, I'm hearing that we're not fully funding all of your work. We're funding a, a portion of it. But can we somehow understand without combing through all of the data from all of the places that you have to report to, just specific to the work at our schools?
Absolutely. So there are two reports that we submit monthly. Both of them are, go to the state, well, actually, one of, one of them goes to the state and both of them goes to Hartford Public Schools. The report that goes to the state is done in our Cayan system, or now what is called the TransAct system, which we use for other programs. So at any point in time, we can click a button and give you the report so you can see how many points of service. You can see the types of service. You can see the children that enrolled. In addition to that, because that information wasn't comprehensive enough, Hartford Public Schools, as the superintendent mentioned, has had this contract for 20 years and we have developed a Moore's Report, which basically, an outcomes report that we provide monthly, which then allows us to speak specifically to other types of information that isn't captured in the TransAct. Because in order to have your information in the TransAct system, you must have demographic information, parenting information, a variety of things. And when you're doing one-touch activities at a school, you're not going to have them fill out an intake form just to participate. It becomes a barrier. So that's why we have the two types of reports. So in answer to your question, yes, there's absolutely data there. It's absolutely provided monthly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board Member Oliver?
Thank you. It's so wonderful to see you.
Great seeing you again.
Always impressed in, by the amount of work that you do and you oversee. These organizations are just such fantastic assets in our community. And I just, again, underscoring the fact that the majority of these funds, unfortunately, you have to actually raise yourself. And so the commitment to community is there. As we're talking about data piece and what can be shared with us, I think that, and and this may be something more superintendent also for, for your team, is I think it's helpful for us in community and even parents to better understand what FRCs actually are and what resources are there. I'm sure there's other insights that have been brought to bear in terms of what type of referrals. And I'm sure those are the type of conversations you're having with our community, the Office of Family and Community Partnerships team. So is there something that, whether it's quarterly or on an ongoing basis, where it can actually be lifted up to us? Because I'm thinking also about, Superintendent, our conversation as it related to chronic absenteeism and daily attendance. And we talked about root cause issues. And what is it that would be helpful for us as a board to be aware of in terms of the data that's being highlighted? Because I think there's so much that we can learn and that we know that we need to be able to address. And if we need to make some bigger investments in, as a board. So just want to be able to make those connections there. So, but again, wonderful to see you, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Oliver. Are there additional questions? Board Member Walker?
Thank you for what you do. I am still growing in my education about FRCs. But what I did want to lift up, and this is again to Superintendent and her staff I've talked to, Chief Blackburn, too, is the access to data. But in in this case, maybe it's more of an addendum, because I totally agree with you. When you come with a proposal, you got to talk about the future. And so you can't put it all there. I think for our edification, it would be good to have data we collect and and help us, present us to understand the background of, here's what the organizations are, here's what they do, here's the value of wraparound services to the members of our community. Because in many cases, we get challenged on, in some ways, what's the value of these programs? And and can the money be used for alternate ways? And there are ways in which I think, as I've learned more about this, I think there's some education for us and to the community that we serve to understand the value of the programs. And so I would say that, Superintendent, I think there's ways in which the data that can be collected and then just share with us sometimes before we get to the, the renegotiation, just to have us have an understanding of, here's what these organizations do and here's their value. And I've suggested having almost as an addendum, that maybe just add it on, so it's just background for us to understand. for us to understand, and then it makes it really easy for us to understand the value. The more I understand, I realize it's not about the half million dollars that we're providing, it's really the millions of dollars of service that you provide, you and the Hispanic Health Council, to the overall community. I think to see it in that regard, I think it tells a better picture of everything that you do and the value that you have to, to, to our community. Just more of a comment, just leave it there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there additional comments or questions? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to accept funds from the Connecticut State Department of Education Family Resource Grant in the amount of $508,625. Furthermore, to authorize the superintendent to execute contracts as listed for the terms outlined in the contract ending June 30 for 2023 at the amount not to exceed $508,625. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion moves. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 5.5, Acceptance of Funds and Contract Approval, Extended School Hours Grant. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to accept funds from Connecticut State Department of Education Extended School Hours Grant in the amount of $129,990. Furthermore, the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the contract below for the terms outlined in the contract ending June 30 for 2023 at the amount not to exceed $129,990. Connecticut Kids at West Middle and Naylor School, and The Village for Families and Children at Burr, at Burr, MD Fox and Sand School. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Superintendent?
The Connecticut State Department of Education is making funds available to Alliance or Priority School Districts. Hartford is an Alliance Priority School District, and the funds are to provide extended school hours for academic enrichment, support and recreation programs during non-school hours, this is pursuant to statute. And according to state regs, the process of selecting schools to offer the extended day programming must be a competitive one within each of the Alliance School Districts. And so we are soliciting proposals from qualified nonprofit organizations that are able to provide these extended day programs in, in our schools. And the goals of the program are to improve the quality of after-school programs in ways that are consistent with the principles of best educational and positive youth development practices, increase participation and engagement of our students in quality extended day programming. As always, another goal is to strengthen the partnerships between HPS and our community-based organizations and encouraging parental and caregiver involvement and the use of the parents as advisors and volunteers in these extended school hour programs. And we also want to focus on delivering, building capacity of HPS and our, our agencies and our CBOs to continue to collaborate, to plan, deliver, and assess the quality of service provision.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for the superintendent? Board Member Escobado?
Thank you, Chair. Just very quickly, I just, as you may know, I'm the chair of the FCE Committee. And just, just a quick point of clarification as the public is viewing this, and everyone, I cannot stress enough, well, first of all, thank you to all of our CBOs who are doing all the hard work. We cannot express how grateful we are. But I just want to clarify again to the viewing public that in every committee, we vet every proposal, every contract. We ask very detailed questions. So I just want to reiterate that again, these contracts, these proposals, depending on which committees, are vetted thoroughly from, through our, for all of us, through all of us here. I just want to clarify that. I know there's sometimes some false perceptions in the community, and I myself just want to clarify that on the record, that these proposals aren't just passed. They are vetted. Does that mean every committee member agrees with it? No. But we go through all the details. And just for the record, too, we do not need quorum in order to pass a contracted proposal to the next committee. As long as we get through as much details as possible and we feel confident about it and okay, then we push it forward. We do not need quorum for that. And again, we vet all these proposals and contracts, so I don't want there to be a false perception in the community that we are not doing our due diligence in going through all of this. So thank you for that quick rant. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Escobado. Are there additional questions or comments for my colleagues? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to accept the funds from the Connecticut State Department of Education Extended School Hours Grant in the amount $129,990. Furthermore, the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the contracts below for the, for the terms outlined in the contract ending June 30 for 2023 at the amount not to exceed $129,990. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion moves. Congratulations. Moving to item 5.6, First Reading Policy 0010, Theory of Action, and 9321, Board Meetings and Committees. Board Member Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just really quickly, I just want to recognize Ms. Kim Oliver, Board Member Oliver, Board Member Walker, Board Member Francois Triscoll Ledger, hopefully I got that right. And it was reversed, but anyway, my apologies. And Board Member Brody for attending the National School Board Association Conference in Washington, DC, where we had an opportunity to further our knowledge and equity around policy. So the lens of the policy committee will be equity as it has been, but now more conscious of some of the things that we, that we do. So I just wanted to, to just say that. But on to our items. Item one, Theory of Action. Our key takeaways from this policy, a theory of action focuses intention, articulates why actions are planned and taken, and names the expected impact. The proposed updates to the district theory of action written and adopted in 2008 were reviewed and thoroughly discussed. There was a lot of discussion, on this, board members made additional revisions. The next step on this policy, we will return March 6 to our policy committee meeting for review and preparation for a second reading. Item number two, Board Meetings and Committees, Public Comment. The key takeaways from this policy is kind of what is happening in this room at this particular moment. The committee reviewed and discussed the proposed revisions and clarifications to the public comment policy, move for a first reading with clarification on timing for public comment, additional discussion planned for March 6, policy, for our policy committee meeting. Our next steps are as follows. We will return to our policy committee meeting, March 6, for review and preparation for a second reading. In summary, theory of action and public comment policies will be discussed at our policy committee meeting, March 6 at 8:30 a.m. Additional policies prepared for a first reading are student attire, alternative education programs, and equity. The policy committee is also reviewing Cabe Leadership Award opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Johnson. No vote is required at this time, as this is the first reading. However, I do want to open up for any questions or comments from my colleagues. Board Member Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to make a comment about public comment. I think I floated a document to the, my fellow board members to really emphasize the point that, that what's actually being asked for, for is to allow the public to have more voice. And I believe it does need to be within order and timely. That being said, I would challenge us to keep the meeting structured, but let more voice be had, be heard, and to provide more opportunities for the community to speak to us, maybe even beyond the, the monthly meeting, but to have more voice is the direction that I believe the school board should, should move towards.
Thank you, Board Member Walker. I do want to add a comment to piggyback off of that or to echo my colleague. I do think it is important for the public to voice their comments and ideas and thoughts. I also do think it's very important, or probably more equally important, for the public to actually absorb the information that the board is doing in terms of the work, as my colleague just outlined. At the beginning of this meeting, this room was full, and now there's no one here. So while I certainly appreciate us being more proactive, I do think there is, needs to be accountability on both sides, and the public needs to be more engaged and sit through these meetings and see the business of the board. So certainly, I agree with you, but I do think this is a two-way street, but I appreciate the comment. Are there any other, any additional questions or comments as it relates to item 5.6? Board Member Oliver?
Thank you, and thank you to my colleagues on the policy committee, including Pastor Johnson for your leadership here. I just want to extend my thoughts in terms of how important it is for us to lift up our student and parent voice and really appreciate being able to pull them out and make sure that they're heard, knowing that sometimes this meeting conflicts with family time and, and other reasons that it may not always be convenient for our families to be able to provide them more access to our meetings and get, by putting them at the top of the meeting and separating them out, I think is a tremendous idea, and I'm extremely supportive. So thank you for that move, and I look forward to supporting the change on the policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no additional questions or comments, we'll move to item six, Cassette Agenda. Items on the Cassette Agenda are 6.2, Contract Amendment Approval, Caring Nurses, 6.2, sorry, 6.3, yep, sorry, 6.3, Acceptance of Funds of Coral Club of Hartford Bow and Fund, and 6.4, Approval of Minutes, January 17, 2023. Any comments or questions on the Cassette Agenda? Do I have a motion to take the Cassette Agenda up as one item?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Now that the Cassette Agenda is one item, do I have a motion to vote on the Cassette Agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you. February 21, Hartford Board of Education meeting is now adjourned. Have a good evening.